Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. This is the, this is Tuesday, March 14th, 2017. The regular monthly meeting of the Austin City Planning Commission. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight. Before doing, getting to those, I'll ask commissioners if you've had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting dated February 14th. Are there any changes, corrections, additions? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll so move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Burrows.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Lutz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The first item is to consider requests from Hormel Foods Corporation for approval of a seven-foot fence. Austin City Code Section 4.70 subdivision 6B limits fences constructed on lot lines to six feet in height unless approved by council.
This is regarding the Hormel annex. The property is shown on the screen. The property is in I-2, in an I-2 district. It is industrial. The petitioner is appealing from our City Code Section 4.70 subdivision 6B, which limits fences constructed on lot lines to six feet in height unless approved by council. The petitioner has a seven-foot fence around the perimeter and interior of the property, and that's outlined in yellow, and this is the entrance of the building, and this is the rest of the structure. The fence doesn't go along the lot lines in each area, but in a substantial portion of the lot, the fence is on the lot line. The petitioner did already install the fence. They believe that it had been part of their original building permit. When we questioned them on it, they brought this application to the planning commission. They were intending to have the seven-foot fence due to concerns about security. They don't have a guard shack at that location where there's constant monitoring of the property, and felt that the seven-foot fence was necessary. And again, it is allowed if approved by council.
Okay, so there, there's no issues of objections from anyone from, for any reason?
Um, I did send out notices to the people, or to the properties surrounding that particular property, or that parcel, and I did not receive any phone calls or any questions at all about the project or, or what the meeting would be about.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
I'm just curious, how was it brought to the staff's attention that it was seven feet?
Uh, somebody made a complaint.
Okay.
That's how we became aware of it.
And how long has it been there?
It's probably been, I think it was installed late fall, probably before, the ground froze, just before.
But this was something they did not, or they thought that was a part of?
I think they genuinely thought it was part of the, the initial building permit. That happens, but we would normally, I, my department would normally review the fence, and there was no review of the fence in the plan, and it just wasn't in the plan. We, we went back and looked at all the documents, and it wasn't part of it.
We have record of that, that complaint?
Um, you know, I, I usually let them be anonymous. We don't usually share who the complainant is.
Is there something unique about this property or this project that differs from other industries that only have six-foot fencing?
In this instance, it's not necessarily a variance because it is allowed with approval, but the argument from the petitioner is that it's a facility where they feel they need security that maybe another facility wouldn't need.
So if it's not a variance, what sort of our standard here? Is it?
I, you know, I would look at the surrounding area and the other uses with the adjacent properties and the zoning in that area, as well as some of the reasoning behind the request from the petitioner.
What was the nature of the complaint? Just, it was too high, or didn't get permit, or what?
The more questions you ask, the probably, the better you're gonna know who made the complaint. It was just, the complaint was just that they noticed that it was above what was typically allowed, so. And then there was also some barbs on the top. There was barbed wire, which has been removed.
Okay. That was gonna be my other question. So it's just regular at the top, there's no barbed wire or any?
Um, that, that issue's been corrected, and then there were, there were some, um, still, there were still some wire extending above the top rail, but that'll be bent over or cut off at some point. I think the weather's probably made it a little difficult to take care of that right away, but it'll be taken care of.
The contractor listed is Gleason, who did the building work. Is that who did the fence as well?
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I will, I guess, ask for a motion then on this item. Defense appeal.
And this would be in a, this would be a recommendation to the city council.
So that could be noted as well, a recommendation to the city council.
I move we approve the recommendation to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Nelson.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Postma. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is an open public hearing to consider requests from Nicola and Christoph Baumann, 107 27th Street Northwest, Austin, Minnesota, for an interim use permit to house horses on her property. This action is pursuant to Austin City Code Section 11.57, 11.56. The item has been continued, as you recall, from our February 14th, 2017 planning commission meeting.
All right. Included with your packet, a memo to update you about...
It's at page 10.
Yeah, I'm not finding my materials here.
You need it, I have one, if you need it.
Um, so there've been some developments since our last meeting. As you're aware, two of the neighbors who have adjacent properties, well, properties across the street from this property in this area, had some concerns about housing horses in their neighborhood. They also had some concerns that were ongoing, I think for some time, maybe years, about drainage that impacted their properties. They had gotten very short notice of our last meeting, and so we, I requested from the petitioner if she would allow us to continue this matter until today's meeting, which she agreed to. During that time period, she had some contact with her neighbors to kind of describe what she wanted to do, and she can talk about that if, if necessary. And then myself, Stephen Lang, our city engineer, who's also here, and the petitioner, and the, two of the neighbors, the ones who had expressed concerns, had a meeting and sat down and talked about their drainage issues and their concerns on that particular question or issue, and then also talked about, in more detail, the things that Ms. Baumann wanted to do with the property with regards to her horses. And so I'll just go through, at this point, I'll just go through the interim use permit application and the backup material. No, there's the memorandum. And the factors that you need to consider, and then if you have additional questions, we can address those. The interim use permit has a, requires that the planning commission make some findings. Those findings are that the period of time for which the interim use permit is to be granted will terminate before any adverse impacts are felt upon adjacent properties, and we can impose conditions that will limit any of those impacts. The date or event that will terminate the use can be identified with certainty, maximum of five years from date of approval. That would be at, if, if you made a recommendation to approve and the council approved, it would be from that date. The use will not adversely impact the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The use is similar to existing uses in the area. The use shall conform to zoning regulations, except that the city council may waive ordinance provisions upon a finding that the temporary nature of the interim use will eliminate the adverse effects the provisions were intended to prevent. There is adequate assurance that the property will be left in suitable condition after the use is terminated. By agreement, the use will not impose additional costs on the public if it is necessary for the public to take the property in the future. The petitioner does sign a statement to that effect in her application. The property owner or other mutually designated party agrees to any conditions that the city council has deemed appropriate for permission of use, including potentially financial bonds, if needed. In this instance, the petitioner is asking for, for horses to house on her property. They would be fenced in into a pasture area. They would have some, she would need some additional structures to care for her horses. Some of those would be to, actually, she's proposed a 60-by-80 exercise and storage building, and a 36-by-44 smaller horse stall, and two temporary run-in shelters, which would be at or under 200 square feet. And that brings into play a couple of our ordinances that limit square footage of accessory structures and number of accessory structures. So this would be an exception to that ordinance as part of the interim use permit, and to allow the use that, that is requested. The, the 60-by-80 stall would be very large. The petitioner does own six parcels here, one, two, three, four, five, and six. And it consists of about 20 acres. If necessary, you know, we might require that those parcels be combined if there was a need to have a, maybe a primary residence on the structure in order to allow accessory structures. However, the planning commission could recommend that she be allowed to have these structures without having the requirement of primary residence. The staff recommendations would be that the horses be limited to four and to an area consisting of approximately three acres of the property owned by the Baumanns. The three acres is just because that's what the petitioner had initially kind of outlined as the pasture area that she had initially intended, or she'd initially intended to locate it. The conversations that we had with the neighbors regarding their drainage issues have kind of altered her plans to some degree. They're a little less defined. Part of the discussion was to add a retention pond to her property. That would take up about an acre of her property and would protect some of the neighboring properties from big rain events or events where there was a lot of overland flow of water. It doesn't happen a lot, but it happens enough that they're concerned about their property and protecting their property. Stephen can tell you a little bit more about the dynamics of the drainage issue if you need more information. Her property is impacted, just like everyone else's property, but since she doesn't have any, you know, a home in that area, or they're a low spot, or, you know, just goes over her property, rather than impacting it like it does the people on the other side of her. The recommendation regarding the buildings, as I went through, would be that she have the small, the exercise and storage building, the horse stall, the two temporary run-in shelters, but that the building permits and, and building code compliance would be required. She has provided some examples, and they were attached to your materials this time. The notes or the, the comments on the materials are, are her comments. We would also require that vegetative cover be maintained in the pasture to prevent erosion and other water contamination. Would require that the animals be safely and securely fenced into the, the area that is provided for them, and the petitioner has provided some detail about the mesh fence. And again, she, she's very knowledgeable about all of these things, and she can talk to you about it in great detail if you, if you want, and, and it's actually pretty interesting. The property and adjacent properties, I have here that they must be used continuously for non-conforming agricultural use and consist of more than 10 acres to buffer the use from adjacent properties. You know, I don't know that it has to be used for non-conforming agricultural use, which is the current farming, crop farming in this larger area. I mean, it could just be any use that buffers her property, if there was some other development that took place in the area. For instance, if there was some residential here. I mean, they own all this property, so it would dictate what's developed there, but so for instance, if the, the horse pasture was in this area, there'd be some buffer around that. And the number of 10 acres is just a, a number that I thought would be appropriate to create that space. The horses must have their basic needs met, shelter, food, grooming, water, and veterinary care. The buildings must be maintained and in good condition, including exterior finishes. Waste must be properly handled. Again, the petitioner can give you more details about that. Any required permits or licenses must be obtained in current, a water retention pond, and then a water retention pond will be constructed by the city with cooperation of the petitioner. To mitigate drainage issues in the area, the interim, and then I have here, the interim use permit will be effective for five years from the date of completion of the pond, as determined by the city, but that should be strict, stricken. The interim use permit by our ordinance has to be five years from the date of approval. There's not really any flexibility there. I did send out notices to properties on this area and a little bit further to the east and to the south. And I received the same comments that you received from two neighbors, and then there was another neighbor some distance away who had just been talking to the two that had communicated with us, that he just wanted to be kept in a loop, didn't necessarily have a strong opinion, one way or the other, but just wanted to know what, you know, what was happening. And then I understand that...
There is a neighbor here?
Another neighbor who supports the petition, the interim use permit. The, let's see. I guess I'll just open it up to questions, I guess, at this point.
Holly, I've got one that, so there's a, a page 31 in my packet. You've got kind of zoomed-in picture of the three acres that we're talking about, and there's little black boxes showing where the horse stalls and whatnot are gonna go. And I'm curious, because the retaining pond is new information from when we sort of looked at this last meeting. Can you show me where that will be on this map, so to speak?
That is a good question. Kind of looking at Stephen because he has some information about that, but I think that is still being explored.
Okay. Because I, I drove through there a couple of times to check it out, and I can definitely see how there's gonna be some drainage issues there.
Like Holly had said, the, the petitioner is dealing with drainage along with the adjacent property owners. There is a lot of drainage that comes from the south side of Oakland Avenue, from the Holiday Dodge site. It goes north across Oakland Avenue and then drains across the petitioner's property. So the drainage path comes along this direction and down here towards Second Avenue, where it meets. Second Avenue continues along ditches there and down to Turtle Creek as it goes to the, to the east. So there's a couple different options that we've done some just initial investigation on, and those options would be for placing a detention pond in this area, or a detention pond down in this area. And just through some initial conversations, we're, with the petitioner, we're kind of looking at this area as, as initially the preferred option to catch any of the water that's either, it would catch a portion of water that's cheating off the horse pasture area. It would catch the water that comes underneath Oakland Avenue, and it would also catch a portion of water here from the farm field as well. So when we're looking at kind of gathering the most water in the area, that, that lower location here is, would be, would be my preferred area as well, and that seems to be the preferred area from the petitioner, just initially looking at the options.
So would that, then, with that in place, satisfy the, the residents who were having a problem? I mean, in terms of what the issues they had?
First, I'll just speak in general about the pond. This is, has about a, this area has about a 35-acre watershed, and the pond would capture about seven acres of the 35 acres, so it's not going to, can't 100% guarantee that it's gonna correct all of the issues for the residents, but we looked at, this is the best location in this developed area to put the detention pond to capture as much as possible. So from a, a water standpoint, it's the, the best possible location for it, but it's not the foolproof solution. And then Holly can address those questions about the petitioner, or about the comments from the neighbors.
Thank you.
Um, the, the neighbors were aware, they, so this time around, they had a month's notice of the meeting. They chose not to be here. They had described to us, myself and Mr. Lang, pretty thoroughly what their concerns were, and they were addressed in this condition added to the interim use permit, which is the retention pond.
They were satisfied with that, then, in terms of how that would, how they might be, or at some point?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, they'd like to just have it without her getting anything out of it, right? I mean, and she would like to just have her project without having to do a retention pond, but, you know, there's some, you know...
Negotiation?
Yeah, negotiation. They, they came to a consensus because they both needed something or wanted something that the other could help them with.
Well, that's good, actually, so, yeah, glad to hear that. Okay, any other questions for the commissioners?
So how do we reconcile this with the ordinance banning farm animals in the city? That's my primary concern here.
That it's a temporary use, potentially. I mean, she could re, she could ask for another permit, five years from now. The, there's not a ban so much as they're allowed in agricultural, animals are allowed in agricultural areas. We have only one, but we only have one privately-owned parcel in the city that's known agricultural, and that's Stivers', and they have chickens there, but they could have other animals if they so desired. There are farm animals in mostly areas where we've recently annexed in the last several years, you know, that were existing, and those would be non-conforming uses. And then the issue of nuisance would trump anything. And in this instance, so, so we've had lots of requests about hobby farms, and as we have people with large parcels that are interested in having animals or doing some 4H, or having a few animals that maybe their neighbors won't even notice that they have. We really don't get any, I haven't gotten any complaints about any horses or any animals out in the county, but in trying to, to kind of address that issue, it seemed better to do it on a case-by-case basis than to have a, you know, kind of a all-encompassing ordinance, like a hobby farm ordinance, where people would just have the right to have animals to a certain degree or under certain requirements, but we wouldn't be able to necessarily impact each one of those individuals, or to, I guess, craft a particular set of regulations for each individual unique property. Whereas with the interim use permit, we have the capacity to look at this particular individual and make sure that they have certain requirements and that they are meeting those requirements. So if, if there's a problem and there's a nuisance issue, or any of the conditions aren't complied with, this could be revoked. Whereas with maybe an overall ordinance, we'd just find people or, you know, try to get game compliance in some other way. I don't know if Mr. Byrd wants to add anything to that.
The interim use permit process was added to the ordinance relatively recently. In fact, it's kind of a relatively young development under zoning law. And the idea behind it is to allow flexibility in those areas where flexibility might be deemed appropriate because of something unique about that particular area. But in a, in a changing world where somewhere just a few years down the road, we might change our minds about whether that's the right fit. So to give you an answer about this particular property, if you were inclined to approve this, you would look at the fact that it is roughly 20 acres of currently tilled agricultural land, which is a fairly odd thing to exist inside the city limits of Austin. The long-term goal of this area, from a planning perspective, would be that it would be developed into residential, which is what its current zoning is. However, it doesn't appear that that's on the horizon in the next couple of years. It's very likely that this land will continue to be tilled for agricultural purposes for the next five years or longer. And so an interim use permit can be used in an area like this where you say, look, the large size, the fact that it's, it's used agricultural, the fact that if it was zoned agricultural, we could have animals on it, so its use is sort of consistent with, you know, a different zoning, but we don't want to change the zoning because we want to continue to encourage moving towards residential in the future. This allows the landowner to use it temporarily in that fashion, and as Holly said, it allows us to put all these conditions on and these requirements on that wouldn't generally apply if this was a zoning classification where animals were just allowed. So we get more controls, and we get more ability to try to ensure that those abrasive nature of agricultural use across the street from a residential use can be polished off a little bit by talking about how far back it has to be set, or what kind of fencing has to be there, you know, what kind of conditions the buildings have to be in, or what's style of different things we want to use, or the water detention pond, for instance. And so we have a lot of things that we can do that add to the comfort level of allowing this temporarily in that area, and that's kind of what it's designed for. You know, the, the flip is, in five years, this permit's either going to expire and not be renewed, or it's going to be renewed at that time. And so the landowner's risk, of course, is that as things change, or as we experience what it's like to have horses in that vicinity for the next five years, we'll identify additional things that raise concerns in the neighborhood setting. So the risk is that it, it's only for a period of time, and there's no guarantees that it would be renewed. So whatever investment she's making needs to be made with the understanding that in five years, this could go away. On the other hand, if we're back here in five years and there generally wasn't a problem, and it doesn't look like development as a residential neighborhood is on the horizon again, you folks may be confronted with another application for another five-year permit, and you'll have to consider it based upon the facts at that time. Is that helpful? Sort of.
So the IUP essentially trumps the ordinance?
Yes.
That bans farm animals within the city, essentially.
Farm animals are, I believe, allowed on areas zoned for agricultural uses.
Correct.
So what this trumps is that even though this is zoned residential, that use that would be appropriate, in theory, if we had agriculturally zoned areas, is allowed here temporarily only because it makes sense temporarily to allow that here, waning for different development. different development in the future. So yes, it trumps it in that way.
In that way.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question, because I was concerned about at the five-year time, what would, you know, where are we, what's the next step? So thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from the commissioners?
One of the questions I guess I kind of have is I'm looking, it looks like there are three structures proposed for this, one of which is sort of the max size for what we normally look at at a parcel this size, and one of them is much bigger. And typically, I believe, two is allowed for a parcel, and so we're looking at a third, much smaller one, kind of a run-in stall. What, how many, I mean, do we have any sense of how many parcels in Austin are, have above the allowed amount of extra buildings on them, so to speak? And if, in five years, for whatever reason, this would have to go away, I'm assuming those buildings do not, that they are still, they can be there forever. Is that correct?
Unless there is some reason why there was, like, a conflict with those buildings there, I don't see why the buildings would have to be removed. The properties in the city that have either larger buildings or more buildings than we typically allow would either have gone through a variance process or have, or be non-conforming. And they're typically on larger lots when they ask for a variance. I mean, there are times when they might have a huge structure that well exceeds our square footage limit, but the coverage of their, like, we have a 40% coverage limit, and they might have a coverage limit of 3% even with this large building because of the size of their parcel. So it's something unique about the property that allows them, or allowed us to, or the planning commission and the council to approve a variance for those kinds of things.
Holly, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Out of these accessory structures that you list, some of them are on skids or are temporary and removable? Is that correct?
The two run-in shelters are removable. They're, they would be easily removed, and they're the smaller shed-size shelters. So the only two permanent structures are the 36 by 44 and the 60 by 80.
If the two temporary skid run-in sheds were removed at the end of the five years, leaving the permanent structures, would the permanent structures then still conflict with the accessory use zoning development standards in 11.01?
Uh, depends, let's see. Depends on whether or not the parcel where they are located was combined with the one that has the primary residence.
Are they more than 1,584 square feet combined?
Yes, they would exceed the square footage limit, definitely, but the number of accessory structures...
So my concern with that is that if, if the, or when the interim use permit expires, you would then have created a non-conforming use without a variance in a combined lot. So what we should be, the goal should be at the end of the interim use permit to remove the horses, the use that's no longer required, but to leave generally a piece of land that's developed in a way consistent with the other requirements.
Yeah, we could require that one of the structures be removed if necessary.
I'm wondering if maybe, if they would want to keep those structures long-term, if maybe a variance to allow the accessory structures to exceed the total square footage allowed should be a condition, and they should go through that process, along with combining the lot so we don't have an accessory structure on a lot that's not the same lot as the primary structure.
Well, we could maybe, maybe state something that it would comply with the zoning ordinance so that we can kind of analyze it maybe a little bit more.
Otherwise, in five years, if horses are in fact out of the picture, they could apply for the variance for the building itself at that time, just like if it was a shop or anything else that we get those for.
At that time.
You already have it, yeah, you already have it, yeah.
So that's my word. So get it done either now or sort of even to make sure we're already violated.
So it's possible to make the use interim and make the variance on the building, the accessory building, permanent, all in one act?
Yes, in these various parcels, as I understand it, there is a primary residential structure, and anytime you have a primary residential structure, you're allowed certain outbuildings, and we don't really care what they're used for. It's, the development standards are height and square footage and that their exterior finishes be consistent with the finishes on the, on the primary structure. In other words, that it looks nice, that we're not having pole sheds and, you know, things like that in residential neighborhoods. So whether there are horses in there is the interim use permit, whether there are accessory structures that exceed the square footage would be a development standard that I think we ought to address separately. So the only thing I think that Holly and I are recommending is that there be an added requirement that the buildings to be constructed meet with the existing zoning development standards, so that if there's a conflict there, they have to at least seek a variance so that when this is over, we still have things in the right order.
So we do in interim use language have, "The use shall conform to zoning regulations except the city council may waive ordinance provisions upon a finding that the temporary nature of interim use will eliminate the adverse effects provisions were intended to prevent." But yeah, I would agree that the buildings being permanent would...
Yeah, and I'm assuming the request is due to, that's kind of the minimum space needed for four horses, especially for hay, I mean, just, we can't go smaller, that's why we're looking for the variance.
And I can let the petitioner talk to you about that if you want.
Sure, absolutely.
So can we address that in a condition?
Yeah, it could be in a condition.
The permanency of the accessory buildings?
Yeah, just add a condition that whatever is going to be a permanent constructed structure must conform with existing zoning development standards. And then that allows Holly and I to review how the proposed buildings fit within those and recommend to the owner what sort of variance they might have to seek in order to make the, the condition be met. Maybe it's nothing, maybe it is something, but at least we get it done now before the construction begins so we don't have a problem on the back end after investments are made.
Well, the petitioner's looking to make a pretty substantial investment based on some of the nice pictures we have here, so I'd hate to have a problem later down the road.
Yeah, there are some, there are usually multiple options for handling those kinds of things.
Okay. Do you want to take any questions or explain what you're hoping to?
I guess if you, do you have any questions about any of the...
I have one more question on the drainage issue. Is, that's something that would be addressed regardless of this application, right?
We need a willing property owner to work with us on the drainage issue. So right now, we've identified Ms. Baumann's property as the primary place to put a detention pond, but we have to find a willing property owner to work with us to place it there, too. So that's kind of what Holly was getting at at the very beginning, that city wants a detention pond for the neighborhood, property owner wants a interim use permit for horses, seems like a great time to mend the two projects together so everyone can hopefully be satisfied with the outcome. So if the interim use permit is not approved, it will likely make it more difficult to get a detention pond on that site. That'd be my thoughts. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just a little concerned that, that the drainage issue is part of the permit, one of the conditions. I'm not comfortable with that. I don't think the drainage issue is the responsibility of the permit applicant or the planning commission. I think that's an issue for the city and for specifically Department of Public Works. And to see the two tied together just makes me a little uncomfortable, but it sounds like she's willing on a goodwill to work with you guys and work something out, and that also appeases the homeowners that are in objection. So I think it's great that you all got together and worked something out. I'm just a little concerned about having that be one of the conditions.
Yep.
But it kind of places the responsibility of the drainage on the property owner, and I don't think that would be right.
And that can be a question for Ms. Baumann to answer and her comfort level with, including that with the project as well. That's what I'm not speaking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hello, I'm Nicola Baumann. My address is 107 27th Street Northwest.
So do you have, any of the commissioners have specific questions?
I got a couple.
Okay.
You plan on storing any hay in any of the structures?
Yes, so the secondary accessory structure, which is the 60-foot by 80-foot, and the proposed location for that is right here. That would be, so it's set quite a bit away. It's actually a fire hazard to store hay within the barn where the stalls and horses are, so that's actually by design, and part of the reason that I need a large secondary structure is for hay storage, equipment storage, and then exercise area.
So with the hay storage, do you have any plans for any rodent control?
Um, I, well, I, usually, in my experience, we, I haven't seen rodent issues with hay storage in the current stables that I've been associated with. If that were to arise, it's pretty easy to take care of rodents with just routine trapping and that kind of thing.
Do you have an onsite water supply?
Uh, yes, so I would be hooking up to the home water supply from 107 27th Street. And that would, I would not run water to this structure here, to the 60 by 80 structure. I would only run water to the 36 by 44 where the stalls are because I need daily water supply there.
Would the horses have access to the pond, or is that going to be fenced off?
It would be fenced off.
Um, is this, horses, is it a hobby, or is this any business?
No, no. I'm the six-year-old girl that never outgrew loving horses. I grew up on this land, so this is where I lived. I moved, I went away for school for postgraduate education, came back, took care of my father who was still living here while he was ailing, took the job at Mayo. It all worked together because I got to take care of him, and when he passed, I was, so my father always denied me the horse for 30 years, denied me the horse. When I went away to graduate school, I started taking riding lessons because I realized I wasn't outgrowing this little thing that this six-year-old girl had. So I've been riding horses since I was about 22 years old, and when I moved back to Rochester, I thought, I'm finally out of metropolitan area, I'm going to get my own horse. My own horse turned into two, turned into three. So it's, I can't even call it a hobby, it's a passion, and so it's personal use, and then being on the land is really a tribute to my dad and preserving what he, what he brought us up to do, which is take care of the land, take care of animals, and just try to make the world more beautiful.
Okay. Number eight, one of the conditions it recommended is that the waste must be properly handled. Do you foresee any waste accumulating in any of the barns?
Uh, no, so my, the plan I have is to actually have a trailer that would be parked next to the 36 by 44 structure. So stalls need to be cleaned daily, and you're shoveling manure into a wheelbarrow. I've actually contacted a local farmer, and he's allowing me to haul the manure to his manure pile in the country, because obviously, being in a residential area, I don't want to have a manure pile on-site. I think that would be offensive to the neighbors. So I have worked out that agreement with one person. Probably if there's any gardeners or other farmers, I would imagine I'm going to be getting knocks on my door because horse manure is some of the best fertilizer around, so if any of you want it, it's yours.
Okay, thank you.
Well, given this is temporary in nature, are you planning on moving out to the country? Or you, what's going to happen to the horses in five years when this permit expires?
So in five years, my hope is that this will be something that Austin is actually proud of and that my neighbors are driving down the road and that the best part of their day is looking at those horses grazing in the fields. So of course, I'm hopeful that it'll be renewed. I, I know I'm assuming all of the risk in this, financial and otherwise, and it's up to me to keep that bar set high. When it comes to my horses, I have a higher bar than probably anyone around. So hopeful that I would get it renewed. If it doesn't, it doesn't, that's how the process works.
It looks, it looks like, when I took a drive around, I noticed that kind of little trees lined sort of this whole area. I'm assuming the fences are going to kind of be just inside those trees?
Yep, yep. What I have, what I anticipate, so right now, those trees are really saplings that have grown up and, and just kind of made their home, it's not very groomed. I've measured out that I can have a, very easily, a 100-foot buffer around from where any road is, 100-foot buffer in, and that's where the perimeter fence would be, which is this V mesh fencing. It's a non-climbable fence, so it actually keeps horses in, but it also keeps other animals, children, dogs out, so that you don't get those issues. And in that 100-foot buffer, my plan would be actually to, to better that buffer by putting in shrubs, greenery, arbivideae, and really make that a nice scenic buffer, which will also help with water filtration and erosion. So the plan is to better it all, not just to have the horses.
Good. And to be clear, all of the concerns raised by the neighbors have been addressed and negotiated and resolved?
Yeah, and I, you know, I think Holly has had more conversations with the neighbors. The way we left things was that their, really their priority was the retention pond, and I would say that right now, they are probably not classified as horse lovers, but I'm hoping that will change once they experience them. But they, they did seem to have all their other concerns resolved, and were, I think they were most satisfied that we could work these two projects together, which having horses on the land, you know, I'm happy to make that sacrifice of land to, for the good of the neighbors.
Okay. Any other questions at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we might want to go through when you make a motion to, for whatever, however you want to go. If, if you want to include the staff recommendations, I think we should go through those individually.
Okay, let's do that. Is that what you, you mean?
I'm waiting for a motion to see which direction you're interested in going.
Okay, so, to be clear, on number 10, you're going to drop the second sentence, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so...
And then we were adding that the permanent structures will conform with our zoning requirements.
Okay, I was going to say there was, we kind of added an 11, if I remember, with that variance.
So I guess what we're saying is, we're going to ask for a motion, and with that motion, to whether for or against state the supporting points, either way, as to your motion.
Okay, I'll take a shot at it. I make a motion that we recommend to the council to approve the application. Given the conditions and the staff recommendations, with the, with the edit to item number 10 and then item number 11 would be that the permanent accessory structures meet the zoning requirements.
And then I would also ask that the requirement that the adjacent properties be continuously used as a non-conforming agricultural use be taken out, but that, that there would be a buffer, that it would continue to have a buffer. Unless you have more questions about...
So drop number five, you're saying?
Uh, just part of number five, that continuously, used continuously for non-conforming agricultural So there could be other uses if... So there could be other uses if the property was developed, but there would continue to be a buffer of 10 acres.
Is that, is that part of your motion? Are we on the same page down there?
Sorry.
Taking notes?
Sorry. Does that, does that work, Craig? Do you know what I?
So what you're saying is that in, including the area that will be fenced off for this interim use, that a total of 10 acres be preserved as a means for a buffer between this interim use and any adjacent uses, whatever they might be? So residential development could happen on part of this 20-acre parcel, but only on the 10 acres furthest away, I guess, from, from this area.
Correct.
Is, just question, is that sort of discouraging the use that we would eventually want to get this property towards, based on current zoning?
It would, I, it depends on what a developer wants, or what risk they want to take, how much property that they might purchase and plat, and how many lots they would have, and how big, and, you know, and how, if they, if they, if she, if she has about 20 acres here, some of it's already developed for residential. You know, if there's 10 acres, you know, over by the, you know, behind the veterinarian clinic, I mean, the ones that would maybe be more attractive would be, you know, maybe this, this area here, potentially, maybe here, if, but, you know, ultimately, it's up to the property owner what they want to do with it, and at this point, they want to keep it.
Right.
So...
Absolutely. And you're okay with that?
So we have a motion in progress, or is that your, is that your final?
I think it's all in there.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and I'm not going to repeat it. And Commissioner Lutz, and a second from Commissioner Nelson. Any other discussion?
I just want to commend both the neighbors and the staff for kind of working together on the agreement. Sorry to those that it may have accidentally surprised getting the letter in the mail, but I'm really, regardless of how a vote goes or doesn't go, I'm always happy to see when neighbors can sort of come to an agreement that everybody can live with. It was nice to see, and thank you to the staff for helping with that.
Thank you.
Well done.
We like it when people can come to an agreement as well.
Yes, very good. Okay, so, with that, all in favor?
I agree.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Okay, motion carries? No, yeah, we do have a, yeah, motion carries, on may. Yes, correct. All right, good. Thank you very much. Do we have anything else, Forrest? Any help?
No, we have nothing else.
Okay. With that, I will...
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Lutz to adjourn, second from Commissioner Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're done.